I'd like to call to order the June ninth, 2025's regular city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our strong.
City Clerk Deaton, let the roll call show. Everybody is present, and we will move on to approval of the minutes for May twenty-seventh, 2025. Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of the bills for this evening. Councilmember Moser?
I move the bills as presented.
I'll support.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding the bills? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Dilk?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion regarding the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Move on to approval of tonight's consent agenda, and on tonight's consent agenda, we have the approval for the Carl and Joanne's Old Fashion Christmas and approval for the Carl and Joanne's South Lion Eve fundraiser. The consent agenda is to approve the event and the associated road closures. Councilmember Kurtschwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. Those wishing to address the council have two minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the city clerk, if you would. Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to a discussion of downtown with our DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Just a quick reminder for folks, this Saturday, June fourteenth, we have our second food truck rally at the farmer's market. We've probably got about ten to twelve food trucks lined up. We'll have Pontiac Trail closed again for the event, and it should be a good event. The hours for the market are nine a.m. to two p.m., and yeah, we're excited for the food truck rally. This will be our second one this year. And just another quick note, Weeby Poppin', which is a vendor, a popcorn vendor at the market, recently had an interview on Fox Two, I believe it was last Saturday. If you get a chance, check it out. It's on the South Lion Farmer's Market Facebook page. She does a good job there, but yeah, just want to point that out to people. We've got a pre-construction meeting for Lafayette Park coming up later this month. The project is going to begin shortly thereafter. And then I also have received a draft survey from New Moon Visions, which is the branding company the DDA is working with for the brand refresh project. So once that's been finalized, we're having a few people take a look at it. That's going to be made available to the public. We'll post it online in multiple locations around downtown with the QR codes. People can access it if they see it when they're out and about. And finally, the DDA Board is meeting this Thursday. We have a facade application from one thirty-four East Lake Street. We also have a sign grant application. I can't remember the address, but it's the old Wild Rose Building. So with that, I'll be open to any questions if anybody has them.
Any questions for our DDA Director? Councilmember Dilk?
Thank you. I saw the bike racks were on the, your last report. Are they put in?
They're not installed yet, but they will be soon, so.
Very exciting. Thank you for getting those. And I had one more question. Oh, that the Buy Now Michigan?
Yes.
Then I know there were some sponsorship issues. Do you, have those been cleared up, or do they still need?
As far as I know, they're still in need of additional sponsorships. Councilmember Hanson was able to send a few my way that I was able to share with them, but yeah, they're still looking for additional sponsors.
Do you know if that will hinder them coming, if they can't get them all, or?
They are committed to being here for the event. I don't know if that's going to prohibit them from having the event take place.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bogart?
How's the anticipated vendor turnout for this weekend?
I believe the market, I mean, we're averaging like sixty-five vendors a week, so it should be right around there. Usually we get it, we had a few more for the, for the first food truck rally. The market was full for that, so probably similar to that.
Great. Thanks.
So going back to the Buy Michigan Now Festival, I haven't seen a lot of advertising about the fact that it's coming here from us for South Lion. What are we doing to let folks know that that's going to be here in less than sixty days?
We've posted multiple times on the downtown page about the event. I mean, they've been handling a lot of the advertising for the event as well, so yeah.
I guess I haven't seen their advertising, and I haven't seen the downtown Facebook either. Are we doing anything to get the message out beyond just social media? I mean, are we publishing in the, you know, the monthly magazines, the periodical that goes out, like The Marketeer, or anything like that, that goes to every house that's in the Lion, South Lion community? Anything at all for people that may not be on the internet?
I mean, no, there's a lot of people on the internet, though, so.
But we're not doing anything along those lines?
It wasn't a budgeted item for this fiscal year.
I'm just asking if, you know, what we're doing, and if we're putting all the eggs in the South Lion, downtown South Lion, social media page. Okay?
Mostly, yeah.
Okay. Thanks a lot. At this point, we'll move on to the fire chief's report, and tonight we have our fire marshal, Brad Moynahan.
Good evening, council. Currently, to date, we have six hundred and nine incidents. Tonight is the Howell High School Fire Academy graduation, and that is where our fire chief is. Tomorrow night is our annual firefighter physical agility training, so all members will be participating in physical agility, going through skills, just to make sure we stay in shape. And then I'll give you an update on our burn containers. Today, the DPW was out there grading out all the gravel and then rolling it to make sure it was compacted so that it will handle the weight of our containers. And then tomorrow, we're supposed to start delivery of the containers, and then we can start configuring how they're going to be laid out, and we can start working on them and get them ready for training.
Any questions for Fire Marshal Moynahan?
Yeah. Are you configuring more for the, the house that you guys practice in?
Yeah, so it'll be a separate building right next to that. It'll just give us more versatility, so it'll be a one-story instead of a two-story. It'll have a different shape. It'll be more shaped, kind of like an L, instead of side-by-side, so it'll give us a better, like hallway turn. It'll kind of simulate a different type of household.
Great. Yeah, practice when you don't need to hit something. I like that. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you. Has the new fire truck been ordered?
No, not yet. We still have to, we reached out with the vendor. As far as I know, we still have to contact or meet up with the vendor and start the process of scheduling a sit-down to start the planning and what we're going to have on the rig, things like that.
Nice. Could I ask one more?
Sure.
Do we have a model in our heads of what it's going to be, or is it something that is in the imagination?
Nope. So we have a apparatus committee assembled, including myself and a few other members that have quite a bit of experience with different types of apparatus and equipment, and we all kind of put our heads together on what we believe would be the best layout for a fire engine, and we're all kind of just building our dream engine and make it as efficient as possible. So we do have something in mind. We just have to talk to the vendor and see if they are capable of doing it and building something as close to our vision as possible.
Are you driven by stuff like, you know, like the tight roads that we have in the downtown and all those kinds of things, where something that has already been built a number of times and works for other communities might not end up being the right thing that we needed?
No, absolutely. So it's all going to be built based upon what our current Engine One is, the same size, the same layout, everything. We're just going to try to design it a little bit differently, but along the same type of apparatus, right? So to just have different placement of equipment, different placement for the pump panel. We like the low hose bed. We like the, the smaller water tank, because we're 100% hydranted. There isn't an area in the city that isn't covered by a hydrant, so the lower water tank is, is efficient for us, and it, it gives us the ability to put more equipment on the apparatus.
Makes good sense, yeah. Probably more hanging to the, to the street when it's low like that.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
What else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We went on to the police chief's report with Chief Baki this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Just got a few things tonight. Officer Matthew Osborne successfully completed the police academy and was sworn in on June second, so he is currently starting the FTO program, is doing very well. We did start a promotional process. We have one that's going through the process, which is, which is consistent of a written exam and an oral board. So once he has completed both those successfully, which he's already done the written, then we're going to, sometime in the future, promote him to sergeant. And finally, had a, an opportunity to go to the Washington Police Academy and visit with our cadets. The three that are in there right now spoke with the deputy director, said that they're all doing well. They're doing good in their class, as well as meeting all the standards physically and, and testing-wise, so they're doing really well. So I was happy to hear about that. So they're all excited, they're ready to, they're, they're excited to be there, but they're also ready, and they're telling me they're ready to be done with it already, but because it's kind of challenging, but they're having a good time, and I'm very happy that they're, they're going through it very well, so. And that's pretty much all I got, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Chief Baki this evening? Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move on to new business number one, which is the purchase and installation of a new heating ventilation unit for the tertiary building at the wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, the South Lion Water Department, Wastewater Department, requests approval for the purchase and installation of a new heating ventilation unit in our tertiary building located at the wastewater treatment plant. This new unit is needed to replace the aging HV system in the tertiary building. It's a scheduled purchase for the 2024-25 fiscal year budget as a capital improvement. We received four quotes and recommend the purchase and installation of a new captive air induct heater replacement unit from Accurate HVAC located in Bancroft, Michigan, in the amount of forty-five thousand eighty-three dollars from line item five-nine-two-dash-five-five-seven dash nine-seven-two. Supporting documents have attachment one, which is a quote from Accurate HVAC. Attachment two is a quote from Croft. Attachment three is a quote from Covenant Environmental. Attachment four is a quote from Heinan Engineering, and finally, attachment five is a picture of the existing HV unit. Possible courses of action: approve or not approve the purchase and installation of the new captive air heater replacement unit for the tertiary building at the wastewater treatment plant from Accurate HVAC located in Bancroft, Michigan, in the amount of forty-five thousand eighty-three dollars from line item five-nine-two-dash-five-five-seven-dashnine-seven-two.
Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to, for the purchase and installation of a new captive air induct heater replacement unit for the tertiary building at the wastewater treatment plant from Accurate HVAC located in Bancroft, Michigan, in the amount of forty-five thousand eighty-three dollars from line item five-nine-two-dash-five-five-seven-dashnine-seven-two.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Who have any questions for Mr. Beeson regarding this purchase? Councilmember Kurtschwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The two bids that I sort of looked at was Accurate HVAC and also looked at Covenant Environmental. And the one on Covenant Environmental appeared to have a lot more detail.
They do, yeah.
In terms of exactly what they were going to do with respect to labor, with respect to parts. So what I had to do was go to the Accurate HVAC bid and sort of fill in the blanks, and I filled in the blanks because of the detail that was provided on the other bid. So I'm just curious, I didn't see where the price was that different, and I kind of like a little bit of detail. What was sort of driving the decision?
Accurate HVAC replaced two of our big units at the plant.
Okay.
So they just recently did that last year, so I'm confident in their ability to do this. And I spoke with the owner, Anthony. We went through this in detail. I also talked with HRC on this, because this is a special unit for a special purpose. It is not a HVAC. It doesn't include air. It's only for ventilation and heating. So as you can see in the pictures, it's not mounted on a rooftop. It has its own stand, so I'm confident in Accurate doing the job and completing it, so.
So the other two jobs that they, that they did for you, were they also highly customized, like how this?
Yes, they had to do some customization, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Not, not as much as this, because this is very specific, so.
Yep.
The only way we would have gotten something that we wouldn't have to make any changes would be go back to a Resonar unit, and that was one of the pricier ones that Heinan quoted. So that is exact, so that's, that's the difference. So there will be some changes, very little, though. The stand will stay.
Okay. So the higher bid included some specifications or included some detail that wasn't necessarily needed on this project?
Right.
And you're getting, and that's what I mean, this is highly customized.
Yes.
Yes.
So the Resonar unit was designed for that building back in 1990. In order for us to get one of those, as you can see, it's very, very costly. They don't, they have to build it to fit that. So all I need is something to ventilate and heat this building. It's, it's not manned. Twenty-four hour water running through it, so it'll never heat up completely, but we need to get the moisture out of that with some dry, dry heat, so.
And I think that's one of the things that we tend to forget, I know I do, is that when some of these things come forward, whether it's from DPW or from the water department, we're dealing with, exactly like you said, a building that was built in the 1990s, and so you can't take some of this modern, updated equipment and fit it in, because it's, it's not meant for that size of a building and ever how it's built.
Yep. We were limited on, on what we could use there, definitely. There was only these two and one other that, that would fit that application.
Okay. Thank you. You've been very, very helpful.
Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you. For the benefit of the community, can you explain what tertiary building does?
Tertiary, it's, it's a high-rate clarifier. It's a high-rate sand clarifier. There's three units in there. We call it a polishing unit, so it drops out some of the phosphorus and suspended solids in that building. So it was originally a traveling sand filter that was rehabbed in the early 2000s, so that process has changed from a traveling sand filter to an active flow system. More than welcome to come by. We'll give you a tour. You'd be impressed, so.
Nice.
Yep.
Councilmember Kivell?
So the existing is 25 years old?
The existing dates back to the 1990s, so when they rehabbed that building for tertiary, they didn't touch the heating and ventilation system. They just, they just left it, so probably due to the cost. So yeah, it, it dates back to the 90s, so it's over 25 years old.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Just a quick comment in regards to the Heinan bid. They were bidding out maybe a more premium unit or something of that nature?
Top, top, Resonar is, is top of the line, there's no doubt now. And we did consider, each and every one of these HV companies did their homework, and after they did their homework, I re, I did reach out to HRC to make sure that they, each one met the specs. Obviously, a Resonar would meet the specs. It's, it's eight to 10 weeks out. They have to build this thing, and I, for what were the purpose of just heating that unit, getting some of the moisture out, I don't think we need a Resonar unit.
Well, what, what I was even looking at was the warranties on, you know, the different units that were provided, and Resonar was only like a year warranty, and what the heat exchanger on the, the bid that we were voting on today was 25.
Twenty-five for the heat exchanger, two years, you know, warranty on it.
So, no, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurtschwell?
So, so you're going to go with this unit. How do you know, how do you measure for removal of the moisture? Because I've worked with moisture readers before.
It's a dry heat, so, yeah, it, it will be a dry heat. Right now, we're running on a one burner system. It, it does remove the moisture just from the dry heat, so.
Okay.
It's 100% air, outside air, so it's heating that outside air and just blowing it in there.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Bogart, a second from Councilmember Hanson. Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please?
Moser?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Dilk?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ron. Move on to the budget this evening. Anybody have any questions regarding the budget for this evening?
Actually, I guess I could go to the manager.
Okay. At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. Again, if you'd like to address the council, you have a two-minute time limit to do so, please state your name and address for the city clerk. At this point, we will close public comment, and we will go to the manager's report with city manager Zelmec.
The 2025 road paving project for Eagle Heights subdivision has begun. They've already started to remove concrete, and you'll see additional work done over there for the next couple of months. The Oakland County assessing contract, I've been pointing to the study group established by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, which reviews the cost of equalization and assessment levels. I submitted the request to extend our current contract at the current rate for the next 188, 180 days, which is allowed by our current contract, and I was contacted by, by the county, and they advised that they would extend our contract only for an additional 60 days. I've attached for Council packets and some of my manager's report the actual language that extends that contract for 60 days. I expect that we'll execute that to keep it at the lower level, and this will be on the June 23 city council agenda. The 2026 Pontiac Trail Road Project, this past week, we met with the engineers of the Road Commission, HRC engineers and staff, to discuss the project. We're putting together a prospective timeline for the project, as well as a sequence of the construction. We're looking at holding our first public informational meeting June 24th from four to seven p.m. at South, South Lion High School. I'll give everybody additional information when, when the Road Commission does in fact firm up that particular date and time. The last thing regarding that is, we also have to determine if we want to take on the additional expense of the eastbound turn lane on Nine Mile Road at Pontiac Trail. That goes for Pontiac Trail southbound. Approximately cost of that is between 100 and 140,000 dollars. The solid waste contract, I've been working with our attorney in Lake Sapo from RSOC on our RFP for the waste hauling in South Lion. Our current contract expires June 30th, 2026. It's expected it will go off for a bid in September or October timeframe, with a bid award of sometime in January of 2026. And also, the, since the budget was approved at our last meeting, if any council members want to have their budget binders updated with additional information, if they did any markings on any of the budget documents, please let us know. Drop off your budget document here at the city, and we'll take care of copying and putting that all together for you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Kivell, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious, are people, the supervisors of our departments and things, are they already trying to sketch in some of the stuff that we've asked for for the next budget year?
Yeah, they're preparing for that, but they want to make sure they finish out for the next, you know, month with what we have in this, this bid budget year, so they got less than 30 days to complete all those items first.
Thanks. Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, just a quick question in regards to the solid waste contract that's coming up. Some of these bids that we're getting, as well as maybe a bid from our current hauling company, is composting being considered as one of the added benefits or services that we add, or?
It's a potential add-on, but we're looking at what some other communities have done also, and see what numbers that are actually coming in. But we're trying to look at carts, no carts, all carts, looking at larger companies, smaller companies that potentially could bid on this project, that may be able to be, you know, introduced to a community like South Lion. I mean, we're not as large perhaps, as, perhaps as somebody like Southfield or Sterling Heights, but based upon our population of, you know, thirteen and a half thousand people, they potentially, a smaller contractor might be able to come in. Thank you.
Councilmember Dilk?
Thank you. I might have missed this before, but what is happening with the Dennis Building that was going to go where the old Susie's was? I mean, it got knocked down. Are they going to build there?
Yeah, they're still moving forward with that project right now. I believe they're working on the stormwater agreement, and as soon as that gets worked out and all the details, and they do the installation on that, then I expect to see the construction.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtschwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your weekly city update, you note that the, that the contract we had with the county gave us 180 days. Why are we only getting 60, if the contract said we?
It's by mutual agreement. They don't have to give any days if they want to, but they agreed to 60 days.
Okay.
And it's advantageous for us to do that, because we did have an 80-some percent increase in the new contract, so if we can reduce that at least for two months, it's beneficial to the city of South Lion.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I'm not in favor of what the county did, so just wondered why we couldn't get that 180 days. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bogart?
Any updates on the 11-mile crossing signal?
Yeah, I spoke with the DPW superintendent, and that will be installed after school lets out. We want to make sure we install it on, after people are using it for a regular basis before school next year, so we didn't want to install it with the kids only using it for a week or two. So he's going to get it installed right after school gets done.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you very much. Move on to council comments for this evening, and we'll start with Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would just like to thank Patty Dumbecky, who recently passed away in the past week or so, for her incredible service to the Culture Arts Commission. I can tell you that the evening that she passed, she called my husband and spoke with him and had a list of things that she wanted to make sure that were done, contacts that she had developed over the years. And I think what I was amazed at, and saddened, of course, was her commitment to the city of South Lion and to the Culture Arts Commission. And I think that we tend to forget some of the incredible individuals that we get that serve on our commissions, and Patty definitely was one that just, this was a real heartbreaker for Patty, and I want to thank all the individuals that were at the funeral home and the, the funeral mass over at St. Joe's. It was a great, great reflection of how well Patty was respected in the community. And I think in, in addition to this, is, is more of my commitment as to why we need an event in, I don't care if it's December, I don't care if it's January, pick the month, I don't care, but I think we do need an opportunity where we invite all of our volunteers to an event, whether it's hors d'oeuvres over at the hotel, I don't, I don't care what it is, but, you know, I, I just don't think we do enough for them, or thank them enough for everything that they do, so. So to Carl, I know her husband, and the girls, a lot of people are going to be with you, so. And to the people on the Culture Arts Commission that are struggling a little bit right now, but they will regroup, and there will be other individuals that will come forward that will have just as much of a commitment to cultural arts as Patty Dumbecky had, so thank you for everything you did, Patty. Next, on to Lake Street and the car shows, and I want to go through a couple more of our sponsors. Bullet Distributors out of South Lion, I, I know the owner of Bullet Distributors, great guy, super supporter of the city of South Lion, so thanks, Gary, for everything you do. Chest Roofing and Siding out of South Lion, you know, when you get your roof done, you Chest Roofing and Siding out of Southline, you know, when you get your roof done, you know, take a look at your siding, uh, the two kinda go hand in hand. Uh, lucky that we have the Detroit Hot Rod Sport and Custom out of Plymouth. I mean, how great is it that we're able to attract, you know, some pretty, uh, high-caliber, you know, clubs that are coming to the city of Southline for the Lake Street Cruise? I want to thank you. And of course, Eastlake Dental out in South, here, right here in downtown Southline. What a, what a great dental office, that anytime that you need assistance or help, Eastlake Dental is always there. So thank you to this, uh, meeting's sponsors that are sponsoring the Lake Street Cruising that we have on Wednesday nights. And other than that, I want to thank Ash, Ashley, at Aska Salon. Um, she's getting rave reviews for the haircut she gave me, so I want to thank her and Aska Salon. Uh, Aska, you were just wonderful to work with, and, um, I think you, you hit a home run on this one. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. That was well summarized for Patty Dumbecky and, uh, her contributions. Certainly appreciate that. Councilmember Kibble.
I'd just like to say, I'd like, you had a nice little twinkle in your eye when you were standing there. Okay, I had been kinda grousing about the, we have these events going on and not taking advantage of all the stuff that we have. Nate had gotten in touch with, uh, with Emily Gray, and, uh, she's going to end up getting plants and decorations and all that kinda stuff, and she's got some health issues that make her, she can't really do all the work, so I end up inviting myself to end up putting up stuff that she would buy, and, um, so I'm hoping like crazy we can get on that, and it'll end up being nice real quick, so, um, that, that's really all the only thing that I've got.
All right, councilmember?
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Dilk.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, say this out loud, that was on the, uh, Downtown Southline page today, um, and, and listening to, uh, Councilmember, um, Kurtswell talk about, uh, people who have been on the, on different commissions, and it's, looks like we have open positions in Parks and Recreation Commission, Cultural Arts Commission, Housing Commission, DDA Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate. Just putting it out there, this is a great way to get involved with Southline and, uh, and, and make positive, um, contributions for not a ton of work, so hopefully people, uh, take the call up for that, uh, would be appreciated. And I just wanted to say I'm very excited, because I just saw the sign and then, uh, contacted, uh, the owner, but I saw that, uh, Venue is now opening a, uh, they're expanding into the, uh, the next-door, uh, building, and they're gonna be doing, um, Venue Next Door, and it's, uh, just excited about seeing more, um, uh, more commerce happening downtown. I'm happy that that building is gonna be used for that, so. Just wanted to say congratulations to them, and hopefully we see them soon, sometime in July, I'm hoping. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I'd like to congratulate the graduating class of Southline and Southline East High Schools. I wish you the best on your, your next journey. Um, don't forget the farmer's market, um, food trucks this weekend. Also happening is the youth entrepreneur market down at Southline Big B. Lots of great young vendors with great crafts and food. Always a good time. Also, this Saturday, the Carl and Joanne Foundation will be passing out spruce trees, little saplings. Um, I think they have a thousand of them, so a thousand trees being passed out, so be sure to stop by Heinan Engineering. And then, um, finally, speaking of Carl and Joanne, um, there's always a need for a volunteer for the downtown events. Be sure to check out the Carl and Joanne website or Facebook page for opportunities to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one quick, uh, note today. Um, with the city of Southline having so many ponds and water features in the city, it, um, you know, it's, it would be reminiscent of me not to mention the fact that it is, uh, turtle nesting season right now, and I'd like to remind residents to keep an eye out for any turtles that might be crossing the streets. Um, they are looking for nesting grounds and whatnot, so if you do see a turtle, uh, crossing the street, just be aware of it, let it cross at its own. However, if you do deem that the turtle might be in danger or something of that nature, uh, and it's safe for you to assist them, uh, you can help them cross the road, but just keep some of these tips in mind. You know, always move the turtle in the direction that they're heading. Um, smaller species of turtles usually can lift up their hands, but some of the larger ones might need some help and just take caution when doing so. Um, and only intervene if it's safe to do so. Uh, you don't want to attempt, um, especially if the roads are busy, and, uh, if you are gonna have to pull over, and watch for traffic on both directions as you're doing so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Moser.
Well, I think everybody covered everything, so, other than the volunteer thing, we need Pumpkin Fest, uh, live, Carol and Joanne for the Christmas in July, the, uh, Christmas tree lighting and their, uh, New Year's Eve thing. But our boards and commissions are sorely needing volunteers. We just need more people to get involved, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, I want to remind everyone that our first concert in the park will take place on Friday, June 20th at 7:00 PM. Uh, it'll feature the return of the Judy Banker Band, so make plans to come to the Historic Village for some old-time country music. And as Councilmember Bogart mentioned, on Saturday, June 14th, the youth entrepreneur market will take place next to Big B Coffee from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM, so stop by and see what these young business owners have, uh, made and have available for sale. And then finally, as our DDA, uh, director mentioned, on Saturday, we will have a, uh, food truck rally, we'll have the Circle T Catering, CC Soul Food, Blue Kuna BBQ, Brava Empanada, Fuller Farms Mini Donuts, Happy Camper Ice Cream, Key Lime Time, Kona Ice,